It's seven o'clock, so let's call this regular meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission to order. Your chair has to wear a mask tonight because somebody at home is sick, so I'll be a good boy and do that. Hopefully, everybody can hear me, but if you can't, say something, and I'll do my best to make myself heard. The first order of business is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with sovereignty and justice for all.
Ann, can you take a roll call, please?
Sure, Dee Good.
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
Augustinelli?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
As noted, that client is absent and excused.
The first order of business is public comment. We actually have two public comment sessions during each of our regular meetings, at the beginning and at the end. If anybody has anything they'd like to ask us or tell us, feel free to come to the podium and state your name and tell us what you'd like to tell us. We do ask you to come to the podium because the meeting gets recorded, and if you speak from the audience, it doesn't get picked up on the mic. And like usual, nobody has anything they want to tell us during public comment, so we'll move along. Next item is a review of the agenda. If anybody has a conflict of interest, we should hear about that now, and if not, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is a review of the agenda from the September 27th meeting. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next up is correspondence. John, any correspondence to know about?
There's no correspondence.
All right. Then moving along, under reports, Molly, any town board report this evening?
Yeah, a little bit. Supervisor Corn had some good conversation with the regional manager for the Grand Travers Mall. Included in that discussion was the Lowe's connection, and he made comments last night at the meeting that was very positive, so hopefully, we can do something on that. Also, the supervisor sent a letter to BETA reminding everybody about the terms of the PUD, so that's good. And they did approve the changes to the zoning ordinance for R2 and R3. So that's it.
Thanks, Molly. Bob, any ZBA report this evening?
No meeting.
Okay. Joe, anything new from the Joint Planning Commission?
We have one next week, so soon we'll have a report.
Okay, I guess we do. How about staff report? John or Steve, anything? You've got your monthly report in our packet, I see.
Right. Monthly reports in your packet. If you've got any questions on that, let us know. That was presented to the township board at yesterday's meeting. We also have up on the screen, just referencing to people, that on the township website is the master plan update page, so people can access information as that process continues to go forward. A couple other items we just wanted to mention. Last week, the Michigan Association of Planning had its conference at the resort, and we hosted a mobile workshop of the Cherryland Center. So we had roughly about 12 to 15 people. We toured the site, some of the new developments out there in terms of some of the commercial development, talked about over kind of walking around the site, looking at the Sears and what's been approved for that, and then walked into the old Kmart there and talked about where the Traverse City Symphony Orchestra is at least initially planning to locate, and then we had a little tour of the Curling Center as well. But good engagement and feedback from those that attended.
Great.
Hey, John, did you hit Parks and Rec or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that. Sorry, Chris, didn't mean to do that.
We did have a meeting at the beginning of the month, and we recommended a budget for Parks and Rec for 2024 to the board trustees.
Thank you, Chris. Sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Chairman, a comment on John's report. I was at that little gathering, and our staff did a phenomenal job. They represented us well and did a good job with all of it.
Congratulations.
So we're in to check the site out.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Thank you for joining us on the tour as well.
John?
Always learn something when you go to the Curling Center.
I was curious if you knew anything new about Frankie Road and Meyer.
I have not heard back from Meyer. I have been in contact with their project construction manager at Meyer in the real estate division, but have not had anything recent. So I will be, it's on my to-do list to follow up with that. I did talk with somebody earlier today, a concerned parent there at TCAPs, and expressed their concern, and so we're aware of it. And what Chris is mentioning is that gate that Meyer put up at one of their driveways off of Frankie by the loading dock area there, that wasn't, that was originally temporarily in place as part of the staging area for when they were redoing the renovation. It is now kind of converted into a kind of semi-permanent structure there, so we, there's a, only a temporary certificate of occupancy on that project, so they are not finalized out. So that's our one leverage piece here, but we're expecting them to come back with some type, you know, whatever they're going to do there. We want to be able to review it as probably an amendment to that PUD.
Okay, thank you. Any other information that staff wants to share with us in a report at this point?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then moving along, next up is item, or unfinished business. Item 6A is a review of the draft findings of fact for Planning Department Report 2023-117, the Durga R3 rezoning proposal.
Pull it up on the screen as well, so everybody knows what we're talking about. So this one you've, this is draft findings of fact. You've seen this at the last couple of meetings. This is the site over on Hartman Road, just west of Cass Road. As you can see on the screen, it's highlighted. Proposal change from the rural residential RR to the R3 multifamily zoning district. If you look at the future land use map, we have identified the north side of that corridor as the high-density residential. Nothing totally different from previous meetings, other than the, some of the discussion and research and background has been formulated into the draft findings of fact, and if you had a chance to review that, if you have any comments, or if you want to accept them, and forward them on to the township board.
Thanks, Steve. Commissioners, we've massaged this before, but hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at the findings. If there's any one particular finding or more that anybody wants to talk about or ask questions, now's the time to do that. If they all look, find everybody, then there's a suggested motion that could be made.
I'll make the motion that the findings of fact for application Z 2023-02 submitted by Gerta Durga to rezone parcel 0502202300 from the RR residential, rural residential zoning district to the R3 multifamily residential zoning district as presented in the Planning Department Report 2023-117, and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And with that, there's a second proposed motion that staff has teed up for us.
Okay, a motion to recommend to the town board that application Z 2023-02 submitted by Gerta Durga to rezone parcel 0502202300 from the RR residential zoning district to the R3 multifamily residential zoning district be approved.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is Planning Department Report 2023-118, another review of findings of fact, this for a possible special use permit for portable storage solutions. John or Steve going to take us through that again?
Sure, this is for property at 2550 Cass Road, north of Miller Creek Drive, on the east side of Cass Road. It's about a four-acre parcel that is establishing a new use. It's for establishing retail industrial primary at the subject site, which is a use permitted by special use permit, and it's for a container operation where they'll be selling and leasing containers, shipping containers on the site. They met all the requirements. There's a public hearing held on this last month, and so there's been findings of fact prepared for this particular project. One of the things, and I know in the discussions previously that we did not get, I don't think we, I think it was mentioned, but I don't think we ever really got into, was the actual storage of the containers and regarding stacking of them. So there is a proposed condition to be considered should you approve the project this evening that would limit the stacking of the shipping containers to the rear or to the east side of the building. So they did provide some screening that will, is not in place currently, that is going to be screening on the, along the fence line that faces Cass Road, but that just, that's the only added provision. The other conditions in there are pretty standard for special use permit in terms of recording and so forth.
I was looking at those conditions, and I wondered if, what your thoughts would be about whether there ought to be any limitation on the height of the stacking that can go on to the rear of the building. I mean, we wouldn't want them stacked 100 feet high, and I'm sure nobody's planning that, but we don't say anything about height, do we? Or is that covered or protected elsewhere in the ordinance?
I don't think we have anything else in the ordinance that would govern that, so, and I'm not sure what the appropriate, I guess I'm not familiar with, you know, maybe something can ask the applicant, but I'm not sure in terms of stacking what that would be a feasible, reasonable amount.
Do you want to come to the podium? Thanks.
Good evening, Mark McKelley, the attorney for the applicant. Couple things. We had spoke with John and Steve about the screening up front. We proposed additional screening of trees, evergreens that would grow to a height that would essentially block in a width that would, at their maturity, block the view along Cass Road, because the reality is, is we're going to need to stack more than just east of the building. We're going to have to stack on the, on the north and south sides. So in order to do that, we proposed that additional landscaping. So that's, what we're actually hoping to do is maybe, maybe tweak that condition, but one of the things we, we did say is we wouldn't stack more than too high. So I think that if we can be permitted to stack within the fence, no more than too high, then that's not going to be a problem for us. They do stack three, four deep in the back, but if we can get too high and spread out the area where we can stack, we would be fine, and we would do it all within the screened-in area. So that would be our proposal, to simply amend that.
We'll talk about that in just a second. One other thing I wondered in the report, it was mentioned that the existing parking spaces need to be restripped. I don't know if that's been done yet, or if not, maybe that ought to get tweaked as a condition, just to make sure that...
Yeah, they mentioned it in the site plan, so it is, it is provided for in there, so I'm comfortable with that.
It's already in the site plan, restripping, okay. All right, commissioners, thoughts on the proposed findings of fact, and I guess in addition to that, thoughts about the request or the idea about stacking not just at the east of the building, but north and south as well?
There is an image, photograph taken that you, where you already do see some stacking occurring, so that kind of gives you some perspective, and that would be on the south side is where that picture was taken, so you can kind of see the fence out front, which would have, as Mark mentioned, have plantings in front of there, some arborvitae that will shoot kind of straight up and create that screening, but that kind of gives you a sense of, of what that would look like.
Any reactions, folks?
I don't see a problem with their proposed changes.
I don't either.
It's shorter than the building, you know. I'm concerned if it was higher than the building line, but I don't see any issue with it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of the findings of fact, or take issue with any of the draft findings? And if so, we should talk about that, and if not, I guess first things first, we would need a motion to approve the draft findings of fact.
Do we want to change that condition before we do that? Condition one?
Well...
Or would that be after we...
I think that's in the second motion.
Hmm?
I think that's in the second motion.
Okay.
I think. That makes sense?
Yes, okay.
I'll make the motion that the finding of fact for application SUP 2023-06 is presented in Planning Commission, Planning Department Report 2023-119, and being made a part of this motion be adopted.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. It sounds like the commission is basically, from, from the silence of most of us, I'm inferring that the commission is on board with the idea requested by council for the applicant to allow storage on the north and south as well as the east, and would also agree that all of the storage be capped at no more than too high anywhere.
I suggest that maybe the stacking of shipping containers be limited to two containers high within the fenced area would be suggested.
What does staff think of this?
Sorry, can you say the concept?
The concept?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Was their additional screening offered by the applicant not on the plan that we would also want to make as a condition? They offered it?
Well, they did add this screening. I think it, I don't think there's anything more to add at this point.
So it's on the plan already?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
So we're allowing them to stack too high anywhere?
But, yeah, within the fenced area.
In the fenced area.
But only in the fenced area.
Within the fenced area.
And what if they want to stack them someplace else?
They don't have permission to do it.
Want to high someplace else or not?
Well, there's a provision they already have on the site plan to have two kind of display containers out front of the fenced area, but those areas are already identified, so there's, there shouldn't be any storage out, I mean, that's part of, that's our outdoor storage requirements. There shouldn't be any provision, or there shouldn't be any storing of the containers on the front side of that fence.
I mean, you could add, if you were worried about that, I mean, you could make that first sense of the stacking and the storage of shipping containers will be limited to two containers high within the fenced area, and that handles pretty much everything.
Correct.
That makes sense. So I would suggest that we replace condition one with that sentence. Stacking and storage of shipping containers shall be limited to two containers high within the fenced area.
All right. Motion that application SUP 2023-06 be approved, subject to the following conditions, number one, as amended, and two through five, as indicated in Planning Department Report 2023-119.
Support.
That language sound like it's going to work from applicant's perspective, staff's perspective?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The old Pepsi bill.
See, I know. All right, moving along to the next item on the agenda is new business. First up, item 7A is Planning Department Report 2023-119, request for a possible extension of the Marengo 31 special use permit. John or Steve going to explain this one to us?
Steve's going to cover this one. Highlight the parcel, I'm going to find it in the packet as well. So this is one that came to Plan Commission all the way back at the end of 2021, and it was behind the Baymont on US 31, just south of, on the east side of 31, south of South Airport. And the proposal was for a two-unit, two 30-unit apartment buildings with 60 total units as a commercial district housing development, and that was ultimately approved with conditions by the Plan Commission. There is a provision to proceed meaningfully toward completion within two years from the date of the final approval. We usually go with the date, the RDO was recorded, so when everything is actually finalized, which in this case was December 6th, 2021, however, there's also the provision to extend that for one year, subject to the Plan Commission approving an extension. So the applicant has made that request. In their letter, they've indicated some unforeseen delays related to supply chain, labor, construction, materials, due to the kind of continuing impact of the pandemic that had on all of those, and I believe we've seen at least one or others that have come in for an extension request kind of related to that, and even in the Township's parks projects, we've seen that kind of affect construction as well, so. They have made that request. The applicant actually has a representative here if they want to add anything to do that or elaborate on the schedule, but otherwise, the request is simply to extend that for one year.
Okay, well, we may or may not even need to hear from the applicant.
Exactly.
Does staff have any issues with the request?
I don't think so, yep.
Just to be clear, they, they get one, one-year extension, is that it then? They only get it one time, or can they request?
Only one.
Only one.
Yes. So that basically means they have to start construction by December 6th of 2024, and that means, you know, drawing a permit and actually, you know, starting to go vertical. Okay.
Any commissioners got any issues with that request? We probably need a motion on that, don't we?
Yeah. There is a draft motion.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yes, I'll make the motion that application SUP 2021-03 submitted by M. Brothers Northern LLC to construct two 30-unit apartment buildings on parcel 0502106500 be granted a one-year extension until December 6th, 2024, to begin construction.
Support.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries as well. And the last item of new business this evening is item 7B, Planning Department Report 2023-120, an introduction about a possible commercial district housing SUP at 3066 North Garfield. John or Steve, who's going to?
I'm going to cover this one.
All right.
So this is a property on the southeast corner of Garfield and Dual Road. It was a previously site of a landscaping business. It's kind of just south of, South Airport Road, right next to the car wash that's there on, on Garfield. It's roughly about 1.38 acres in area. We've met a couple of times with the applicant, and they wanted to take advantage of the commercial district housing, which is similar to this, is basically the same provision that the Marengo 31 utilized for that property behind Baymont, because this is a general commercial zoned property, but Section 725 within the ordinance allows for commercial district housing developments to occur. There are specific criteria and standards that have to be adhered to, but before we kind of get into those, just kind of want to generally explain the, what they're proposing is a, originally was a 20-unit building, apartment building. It looks like they're going to be lowering that down to 18 units. It's pretty straightforward, a three-story building. There are some renderings that have been provided that will illustrate that a little bit more, floor plans as well. There is, in terms of multifamily, the site plans are pretty straightforward. There's some provisions there for parking. In this case, there's a range in, in parking requirements. They wanted to kind of at least provide for two parking spaces per unit, so that's been provided on the site. Also, there is stormwater provisions in their onsite stormwater management. There's lighting planned and so forth that go along with that particular site. Specifically to the commercial district housing, I just want to preface this a little bit because I think what they're trying to do is, might not exactly fit the commercial district housing requirements. When you read through the Section 725, there's really kind of three different parts to it. There's a part that talks about design and layout of a commercial district housing development. Then there's open space provisions, and then there's some compatibility standards in there as well. I believe when you look through those standards that are provided in Section 725, really kind of envisions what I would call more of a suburban-style development. So I, I kind of look at it similar to maybe the apartment complex that's over by Home Depot, or let's say if you were to take a portion of the Grand Traverse Mall site, and if you wanted to cite a apartment building on their apartment complex, what would that look like, and what were these standards trying to accomplish by that? And I think in this particular case, a lot of the standards are ensuring that there's some type of buffering, so that while there is that apartment structure that's built there, that it has open space, that there's spacing, that there's efforts to try to mitigate the impacts of the commercial use impact on that potential residential. Because we know that our commercial areas, there's issues related to noise, light, and so forth, and if, when you're trying to establish a residential use in there, it can run into some issues. So I believe that's kind of some of the standards that we ran, that are in that Section 725 currently. Specifically, I wanted to kind of go through those, because I think what they're providing is something a little bit different, and I think it's probably more akin, we don't really see too much of it here in Garfield, but it's more akin to what is being experienced in some of the locations within the city of Traverse City, where we do see some infield development occurring, multifamily in the city that's on small lots. When you look just up the street from here, there's a development... Anika Place? Anika Place, which is kind of on Garfield, actually same size of Garfield, but farther up the road. In that case, it's a much larger development. It's currently under construction. The density is higher there. There are some provisions that they don't necessarily have to deal with, and mainly one of those is onsite stormwater management. But that type of development is something that might, you know, probably would not be seen in Garfield Township under these provisions, even though that particular location where that Anika Place is going in is a commercial zoned property, but does allow for R3 or multifamily type of development. The provisions in 725 start off with design. Multifamily residential uses built within the commercial zoning district are permitted, and the idea is that it integrate with the surrounding uses. The Planning Commission may rely on site design requirements that set forth in Section 427, which is our planned unit residential development. And what that does is allow, ensuring that there's some flexibility, but also that there is some character to the design that really fits, that this is going to be a quality residential development. Multifamily structures under B there shall be abutted by open space on at least one side per building, so that, again, trying to create those buffers there and providing actually some space for the residents of that development. The next one... The next one is the density. So it basically, the baseline density starts at the R3 multifamily, which is our most dense district, which is basically 4,000 square feet per unit, or roughly just shy of 11 units per acre. With the 18 units, what they're proposing is a density of 13. And this is, might exceed that amount, but is not unusual for some of the PURDs or some of the PUDs that we've seen in the township, some of our other developments. Right, traditionally it kind of hovered around that 11 unit per acre. We've seen them as high as 18, 19, or even 20 units per acre. But there is a provision in there that does allow the flexibility for the Planning Commission to adjust that density over what is regularly allowed. So there is that provision in there. The next one is the parking requirements. It's a little confusing by one of the initial statements there, where it says parking requirements shall be as described in R3 multifamily district. There are no provisions in the R3 or parking requirements pertaining strictly to the R3 district. It's really Article 5 that talks about parking, and it's applied to all the uses regardless of the district. But there is one provision in here that is causing some challenges for the applicant's proposal, and that's parking areas shall not be located within any setback area. As proposed, it, the, and I don't think this was maybe apparent to the applicant when they were preparing it, but if you look at the site plan, one of the challenges of this location is that it is a corner lot. So while they meet, the building meets the setback requirements for where it's situated on kind of the southeast corner of the site, the parking area does not, because there's actually two fronts to a corner lot. There's the frontage on, basically the front of the lot on Garfield, and then it just also, the ordinance kind of shows it as a front-facing dual road. And in this case, it's a 40-foot setback. Typically, we do allow for uses, for parking areas, for uses, to allow for that parking to go in the setback areas. We do have a 10-foot no-build area, which is required for landscaping and other things like that. That adds at a minimum, particularly when it's at side or rear parcels, sides of the parcel. So it does meet our no-build requirement, but it does not meet the front setback. So that's a critical piece that I want to come back to a little bit as we kind of go through this. There is landscaping requirements, and they do provide those landscaping buffers around. There is some challenges to that, mainly that, because there is the onsite stormwater there that's being provided around the lot, that some of those plantings may be within the stormwater basins. That's something that we'll want the Township Engineer to review when they're doing stormwater review. We want to keep those out of there to allow, ensure that there's plenty of space for the stormwater. Also, sometimes plantings like that can cause leaves and so forth to accumulate in those basins, and they're not necessarily always cleaned out. Pedestrian access, they do provide walkway, sidewalk along Garfield Road, as well as connection from that sidewalk to the building. There's a sidewalk along the frontage of the building between building and the parking lot. Lighting plan, there's some additional information that we need on that lighting plan, but it's usually not too concerned. There's basically some on-building lighting, as well as some pole, three pole-mounted fixtures that just need to be perhaps adjusted, just to ensure that it does meet our ordinance. There is a provision for open space. It's basically two parts to it. One of it is that each unit will have some form of open space, either a patio or balcony, and it has to be a minimum of 50 square feet. So that is provided on the building. There's also a common outdoor space, and that's calculated by providing 300 square feet per unit. In this, in the case of a 20-unit building, it's 6,000 square feet. If they, if it's lower down to that 18 units, which I suspect is what they're going to be doing, that open space requirement drops down to 5,400 square feet that they have to provide. Right now, as they're kind of showing the plan that's in your packet, it's 6,666 square feet. Another provision in there is that the open space shall be designed to provide a rear yard along the longest length of a given structure. This one, the, most of the open space is actually off to the side. However, it does provide some rear yard space and some of that open space going along the front of the building. And then the last part is that the open space can't be within any of the required setbacks, and that is the case as being presently proposed. The last standard is kind of a reversal of what we typically see. Usually when we're evaluating projects, we're trying to mitigate some of the impacts that the proposed use will have on adjacent uses. This is kind of reversed because it's a less intensive use being applied in a commercial district. So what it's doing is asking the applicant to describe measures that will be taken to mitigate the commercial impacts on the actual project here in the case of this multifamily building. So things such as noise, light, nighttime operations, et cetera. This does have some challenge, there is a car wash directly to the south that is operated seven days a week, at least during typical daylight hours. Just as, when I looked into it, it looks like it is operating 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then more limited hours on Saturday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. At least that's what was indicated online. But there's also, the primary issue there is some of the noise that is impacting. In terms of some of the other uses, probably not adjacent, when I don't, didn't really see anything that would be impacting that. Other considerations, there's some, just a couple other items. Ingress and egress, they are removing, there would be no driveway on Garfield. There would be a sole driveway, and that would be off of Dual Road. So that would be only one driveway. They do provide for snow storage, and there's a dumpster location. There's just some minor items that need to be done to address that in terms of ensuring that there's sufficient area for the snow storage and that there's just some details of the dumpster enclosure. So you can see the, kind of provided some thoughts on how to proceed with this. One of the challenges is, the site plan that's in your packet probably wouldn't be able to go forward based on mainly that parking requirement, which we don't typically have in any of our other districts. Parking, again, is permitted, as well as maneuvering areas are permitted in the setback area. So that's one of the things that really does need to be addressed. I don't see that there would probably be any way to go forward without that being addressed. So I thought this would be an opportunity for maybe some discussion on this. Again, I think what is being proposed is different than what Section 725 envisions. I think 725 envisions a kind of larger typical, you know, suburban-scale development in terms of a multifamily apartment complex. I think what they're providing provides an opportunity to have more infill development. This is an area that's served by water and sewer. It has got some proximity to areas for shopping, potentially jobs. Other services are close by. So it does provide that opportunity to maybe get some additional housing into some other areas within the township. In my mind, these are areas that are typically closer to the city, that are more urban areas, that there could be that potential for this type of infill at perhaps a smaller scale. So I guess the applicant is here, what they're, so if you want to have, hear from them as well about what they're proposing. But I think in order for things to move forward, there's, we do have some options that we can talk about, but I guess for right now, that's where we're at right now in terms of presentation.
Commissioners, what do you want to do? Do you want to talk about this among ourselves right now? Do you want to hear something from an applicant before we start talking? What's your pleasure?
I think it'll help to get the applicant's input anyway before we start talking. At least maybe eliminate some of our questions.
Let's do.
Good evening, I'm Joe Lucchicchio of 3066 North Garfield LLC, and we're the applicant for this proposed project. And Mr. Psych has provided a great overview, and we've had good interaction with he and Mr. Hanon leading up to this. But I just want to say overall, we believe that this proposed development is the ideal adaptive use for this particular site. And this project will cohesively integrate with the surrounding commercial uses and meets the intent and spirit of the commercial district housing development section of the ordinance. We are still working on refining our building, our elevations, tweaking our floor plans a little bit. But we want to emphasize that these are market-rate apartments. And all of the units is drawn, will feature two bedrooms and two bath units, which help meet the biggest market demand. The segment of the market that is in demand and underserved from that style of unit. The, this building will provide an urban-style living experience, as clearly this is an urban site, and is conveniently located near stores, services, places of employment, entertainment. And it's consistent with, you know, we've talked about the township's goals of providing unique housing opportunities. That's been discussed or hit on a couple of times during our meetings. Our challenge, as Mr. Psych has touched upon very well, is the ordinance as it exists is oriented to a suburban site, and this is clearly an urban location. And collectively, I will say that our team, our partnership and the individuals, whether it be collectively or on our own, have worked hand-in-hand with numerous planning commissions and township boards on overcoming challenges like this to create mutually beneficial projects that are an asset to the community and the residents they house. And so we are, we hope that, you know, you'll agree to work with us, put us on the Planning Commission, let us, or excuse me, put us on the public hearing agenda for next month's meeting, let us refine some things, let us try to address some of the issues Mr. Psych raised. And, you know, we have to overcome challenges with the way the ordinance as it is and with the building we're proposing right now, it doesn't work. But we believe that we can make it work with your help. You know, for instance, Mr. Psych brought up the landscaping, or excuse me, the south side and the car wash. And, you know, with our landscape plan, we have an intense landscape plan, and, you know, I'm not sure what Mansfield laid out in terms of quantity, but it meets, it meets the landscape ordinance requirements. But for instance, that south buffer along the car wash could be a tree style that is specifically designed for a screen, and whether it's providing better, and we, maybe we intensify the amount of landscaping over there just to create that buffer, whether it's visual or whether it's noise-oriented or whatever. We come up with the right kind of blockade, if you will, along that to buffer the impact of the car wash, which, you know, has limited hours, and they close at 8 o'clock at night or whatever generally. So it will, it will have some impact, but, you know, again, in urban living environments like this is, you're going to deal with things like that. So, you know, we're open to discussion by all means tonight. It's, we would just appreciate it if we would have the opportunity to get to the next step in the process, which would be next month's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to comment first about anything happening as quickly as next month? That's not possible, I don't believe.
Well, I think, no, I would agree. I think what would have to happen is there would have to be some adjustment to the zoning ordinance.
Which takes time.
Which it takes time, yeah. So specifically to that, I do have some information if you want to, in terms of, provide some options. That's some of the information that's on your desk, and I can cover that when you want to.
I'd like to throw this open to the commissioners. I have one quick clarification or question that I want to pose. I think it'd be good to get it out quickly. In the report that the staff prepared, it indicates the parcel is 1.38 acres. The site plan and the applicant's application on page four says it's 1.18 acres. So something's not matching.
The 1.38 acres is correct per survey, as we state that what Mansfield put out there. I apologize for that.
So it's 1.38?
Probably, and our, so the parcel there includes the right-of-way. When you look, so if, what we're looking, like Steve is measuring right there, that includes the, so the, kind of the extra portion is the Garfield Road right-of-way, which is, there's probably an easement there. So they, in that case, the County Road Commission does not own the right-of-way outright. It's an easement for that. So they're probably just measuring the net property area that would be the development.
Net comes out to about 1.2, just by doing it.
Yeah.
1.2?
Yeah.
Roughly, from the discounting whatever the right-of-way, just going off the area.
Does the right-of-way, can you count the right-of-way, or can you not count the right-of-way?
Well, I mean-
Trying to clarify.
We've kind of gone, that's a good question. I think we, how we've looked at it is we've kind of gone off whatever that tax parcel is, because it just gets into, you know, identifying, you know.
And at least in commercial district housing, I believe they, the baseline is using R3, but they have the ability to go higher in the commercial district housing standards, so.
That doesn't answer my question, whether we count the right-of-way or not.
We, well, we typically would. I mean, we're kind of doing the gross parcel area in most cases, because there isn't a lot of cases where the road right-of-way is outright owned by the road commission. So it is technically owned by the property owner, so.
I'm sure you can clarify that for whenever we do this next, to make sure what the area is that they own. The site plan, also, I'm not sure exactly what this means, but it said 50-foot right-of-way, but then it said parenthetically unverified. And I'm not sure what, does that mean nobody knows if the right-of-way is 50 feet? Or sometimes right-of-ways are 60, 60, but I don't know what that is. You see where I'm looking, John?
Absolutely. So that would mean 100-foot right-of-way there. It's, yeah, so there isn't, part of the challenge is there's not a lot of consistency. That's why we typically would go to that when I'm talking about the parcel area. Because when you look at right-of-way along any given roadway, it's a mixture of owned outright property and easements, and those alter and adjust. So it's not like it, you know, there's a standard typically that's applied, but it doesn't, it may not always be the case. There is like traditionally a 66-foot wide, but that's for the full width. In this case, it would identify that, you know, at 50 feet. That looks like it's going roughly to center line. So that's potentially, not knowing what's on the other side, and that would almost be like 100-foot wide right-of-way, which is very possible considering it's a five-lane roadway. I'm not sure what unverified.
I don't think they've done a topographic or boundary survey.
Okay.
So if they haven't done a boundary survey, they haven't actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking before we get super concerned about densities and this, that, the other thing, we probably better know what the area is that we're applying the criteria to.
Sure.
I think I, for one, too, would also could use a refresher. And maybe it would be helpful for everybody if you could maybe get us some information about what are exemplars, or what are some other densities per acre in any of the other places where we've done this commercial housing feature in a, in a commercial CG zone.
Okay.
And that might help. We drive by, compare this with other things, and see, see what the thoughts are. Commissioners, fire away with questions.
Well, when he's, when they're doing that research, they could find some of the ones that are over 10 per acre, the density, so we could kind of see, even in the regular R3. You said there's some up to 18, you thought, in our township?
There's some of our PUDs.
Their PUDs, yeah.
Kind of curious where them are at that's that tight, I'd-
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay, just if you could-
Yeah, absolutely.
Look into that, because they're, that's the first thing I thought of when we see 1.38 acres. If it really is that much, that would be roughly 14 units, not 18 or 20. And that's why I'm kind of curious why we want to go much more than our 4,000.
Right.
Our 3 has fourth, the volume, or whatever. Our, our three has fourth, the volume, or what is it? It's one unit per 4,000 feet and that would, so that would roughly be 14.
Well, and I think, I think one of the things to be mindful of is, one, you, there is provisions in the ordinance that create some flexibility to allow you to go for higher density. So it is right in that, in 725 currently. Also, just to give you some perspective, this is, I would say that this is not, this is a little bit going to be kind of a more infill, so the advantage is to kind of create some, a little bit higher density. As I mentioned, that Anika place just up the road, give you perspective, that's 53 units on about a little over 1.5 acres. In that case, we're talking about around 33 units per acre.
And that's in the city, right?
It's the city, yes.
That's way up there by, um.
Right, past Carver on the right-hand side, it's going in right now.
Okay.
So I, and granted, that's much higher scale than what we're talking about, but just in perspective, that's, now, the city does allow for densities much higher and we're not necessarily trying to replicate those, but we're trying to offer, I guess, if I could look at it where the city has some of the highest density residential and then kind of basically slopes down to maybe some of our lowest density residential areas within the township, this is kind of in that middle area potentially, so.
So besides density, how do you expect to get by the part that the parking lot is within the, that other setback?
Well, the only, the only option I could see in that case would be to amend the ordinance as it's, as it currently is written.
And that would be amending the, the Commercial District or?
Commercial District Housing Development Section.
Okay.
Basically, so on your, on your desk, I provided a couple of options for you of what that would look like. One, this is the current text. The other one would be essentially that part that talks about parking would be to essentially strike that part that talks about the parking in the setback area.
So John, the only thing that they couldn't, the problem with the current plan is the 40 foot setback on dual road and the fact that the parking's in it. If they could rotate the building and fit it within the setbacks, would that meet the ordinance?
No, the building cannot go in the setbacks.
No, and, and meet the setbacks for the building.
Oh.
So 185 foot wide lot, that's the side yard setback?
It's shown as 18 and a half feet. Yeah, that's 18 and a half. There's a, it's a formula and then the, the one on the east side is 25. It's based on the lot width at least.
What items can go in the right of way? Open space, no storage?
You mean in the setback areas?
In the setbacks.
In this case, it would just be the open space, stormwater can go in there. Oh, just not open space.
Yeah, okay.
So really, basically stormwater, landscape buffers.
What's the, what's the ordinance in, in other districts, other commercial or industrial districts? Do they allow parking within the, the road?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah.
I've been thinking of the, the project we just visited over the last couple of months with the photographic studio and coffee shop, you know, that, that parking was right up to the road.
Yeah, that's over there.
Existing use?
Yeah, there was a ZBA case decision made back in the early 80s that addressed that. And limited that provision, because that would have, they would have, in that case, would have had to meet the 10 foot no build buffer strip typically. But then when we discovered that decision that was made, it exempted that location based on the ZBA decision. But, yeah, like if you look over at like Cherryland where, you know, Burger King was redone, you see the parking right up to, there's that, there's basically a 10 foot no build strip that's in there for the most case.
So basically, anybody else in general commercial would not be subject to this parking setback requirement?
That's correct. It's a, I think what it, why it's in there, and again, it gets back to how they envision what this is. And I think it's trying to create additional buffers in that. That's the only thing I can think of is, because obviously if, if there's, if the parking is not in there, if the open space isn't in there, the building's not in there, what's the only thing that can go in the setback area? Pretty much landscaping or stormwater. So I think it's trying to create that. And obviously, it probably doesn't anticipate a situation like being on a corner lot.
The other thing with the Commercial District Housing Standards, some of the other ones kind of allude to, since you're in the Commercial District, a mix of commercial and residential. We were thinking of places like, like Cherryland Mall or even Grand Traverse Mall, if they had that, and a mix of residential and commercial to have, at least allow for some amount of buffering or something, or some amount of open space. In this case, what we're seeing is a proposal for, and just like Marengo was, since these are smaller parcels, in this case a very small parcel, we're seeing proposal for just housing.
Any other commissioners got any thoughts or comments they want to make or questions?
Well, if it's a set in stone rule, as it is right now, which is what I understand it to be, it doesn't seem like much of a point to advance the, unless there's a solution to the problem, I don't see advancing the plan to a public hearing when we know that the plan as it's presented violates a hard and fast rule of the ordinance.
So if we were to proceed to recommend to the town board that the zoning ordinance be amended in such a way that this sort of a plan could happen, what do you think, or maybe it's too early to ask, what do you think of the wisdom of amending the zoning ordinance to make something like this happen or, or not? And maybe it's not a fair question, because nobody's had a chance to read this. It was on our desks tonight.
The new information.
Right. I guess part of me is thinking maybe we ought to be moving this back to staff to get us a PD report for our next meeting, first of November, answering some of these questions that we've been asking you guys and maybe suggesting some reasons why some of these proposed tweaks that would maybe allow for this, why you think those make some sense. And then we can debate those and if we agree with them, then make recommendations to the town board to, to amend the ordinance.
Sure. I, I mean, quite honestly, we've kicked this one around quite a bit. I think we're comfortable with the, at least address, so there's really only a couple of options here. One is the, the project just doesn't go forward as it's, because I don't know if the, you know, the applicant's indicated to us as it's currently, the ordinance is, the standards in there are not going to allow for this to work. So there's that. So there definitely this, this SUP, there's no point in moving that forward. That's why there is no recommendation to move it forward without this discussion. Really, the only other option is to do that, is to address the standards within the Commercial District Housing. I think it's a great provision to have the Commercial District Housing Development, but, and there's some nice tweaks I'd like to see with it, because one of the things I, I would envision is still to allow for that kind of suburban style development, but then also to maybe allow for some smaller scale ones. In this case, you know, maybe for those that are 30, 25 or 20 units or smaller. But I don't think we're probably at, wanting to get into some of that discussion right now. So basically, I just narrow it down to making a change in terms of that, removing that parking setback requirement. I mean, that would probably be the only thing that we would come back at this. Certainly, we can provide you with the additional information. I would, I would say this, there's, if you, if you want to consider the zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment should be kind of made in light of its own and not related to the development application.
Sure, sure.
I would say that the development application at this time would, you'd want to table or pause that completely. I know that adds more time for the applicant, but the reality is it cannot go forward because of the way the ordinance is currently constructed. So, but then what I would say is then you can focus on the amendment, if that's something that you want to consider, and then just to really focus on that one particular item, if that's something you want to pursue.
So how long is that going to take, meeting wise, to get that changed if we, just that parking part? That would still take two, three months, right?
So, yes, it would, it would take a few months, because there's, it's obviously, there's a, a public hearing that has to be held at the planning commission level here and then it's an ordinance change. So it has to go to the town board and there would have to be an amendment to, a public hearing as well.
I mean, do you have public hearings at both?
Public hearings at both of them. And then at that point, I think you would resume the SUP application, because then it would actually have that, you know, standard would not be there. But that's if you want to pursue that process. That's really the only way that we can see moving this forward. The way the ordinance is written is, is extremely black and white. There's no gray to it.
Well, I think we should pursue that option.
We've had lots of discussion about higher density, how do we bring in housing closer to town? How do we, so if we have options to make changes to that and in view of the fact that the rest of the commercial, that parking can go right out to the road. So if we have ways that we can encourage that housing, and I particularly like the market rate idea, then I'd like to see us try to do that.
Yeah, I agree. I, I'm just trying to, I'm sitting here and brainstorming, what, what, what's wrong with allowing the parking out toward the road there? You know, trying to think of any, anything that would come up that would cause an issue and I can't, you know, based on other areas being able to do it. It, parking, a parking lot in and of itself is some sort of a buffer, i- in a way as a buffer, because it's nothing, you know, it's, it's distancing the building from the, the road itself. And I know we don't want to make a change on one, on one project, I know that, but in this case, I mean, the dual road even is shifted over further. They're not even anywhere near the end of their right of way, so. I think it's worth pursuing change in the ordinance in general. I don't know how many more of these would come up, probably not very many, but I think we could, you know. I'm in agreement with everything that was said, we can't really move forward, just against, you know, it violates the ordinance right now. We certainly can't, you know, approve it or move forward with it.
So there are a couple of things I just want to mention. If that were to, that parking setback requirement were to be removed, the 725 does, does reference site design requirements and general criteria in the PURD section that can be applied to this. So if there was another development that were to occur where you wanted to have some type of buffer or something like that, I think it does give some flexibility to the planning commission as well as the SUP standards also apply to that. So if that were to remove and then let's say you kind of regret it, because there might be a situation where you wish that were to be applied, I'm comfortable in seeing that that criteria in the PURD and the special use permit could apply where you could require some type of needed setback or some type of buffer area. The other thing is on your desk, we provided that text of the current 725 with that option one, kind of eliminating it, but I also included this map. And just to give you an idea, Commercial District Housing Developments are only permitted in three districts. The CG General Commercial, CH Highway Commercial and CP Plan Shopping Center. So that just gives you an idea of where those would be located. In many instances, if those were, you know, they're, you're, you're probably going to go where there's going to be water and sewer typically for multi-family. So that's kind of limiting some of the stuff towards the south end of the township. And then if you get anything over on the 31 corridor, there might be some pieces towards the back, but a lot of the frontage is highly valued, you know, other than like we were mentioning, if you were to do some type of infill, that might create some opportunities like in the Grand Traverse Mall. But I guess what I'm saying is a lot of that frontage along 31 is probably not going to be used for multi-family. It's going to be high, you know, more valued for the commercial that's planned. So I don't, I think this is a great option. It's, application may be somewhat limited anyways in how it can go in.
How many Commercial District Housing Developments do we have in one of those three commercial zones in which they'd be allowed?
Other than Marengo, I'm not sure if we-
I don't know specifically, because a lot of the multi-family that has been built has been through PUDs, like Chelsea Park's been a PUD.
Not through this, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many through this.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot to answer that tonight. Is there a way you, you could fairly easily, with all your magical computer skills, figure out the answer to that question?
We can go back and check permits and records, no?
I don't know if this provision was in the, before 2015 when the new ordinance was developed or not.
It'd be helpful, I think, to know what other Commercial District Housing Developments we've approved in the past. I know we try to be relatively consistent in our views of things and it might be informative to us to know what we've approved in the past and, and not that that necessarily restricts us, but it informs us. Correct. Do you understand, Joe, with, there's no way we can go forward?
I understand.
Okay, okay. So what sort of motion do we need? A motion to table this application or do we not?
I would suggest that it would be a motion to table the application in terms of us preparing information to make that change in the ordinance. Like I said, I, I think we're comfortable with what is proposed in here. If you, if you do want to look at this, I know, I realize it's on your desk, but it would probably be simple as addressing the, striking the part that says parking areas shall not be located within a setback.
But if we're going to look at this in a month, maybe you can do your usual planning department report that explains the rationales, this is what you think is what's needed.
Yeah.
You'll have more time to think on it and we'll have time when we look at our packets to see whether we totally agree with that or whether we have what if questions or, or whatever.
We could put it in a study session in two weeks, put it on, if you want to look at that or if you want to wait till regular meeting.
Well, we're about to find out whether we're going to have a study session in two weeks, we think.
Okay. All right.
So first, I guess, sounds like we, it would be appropriate to have a motion to table this particular application that's described in Planning Department Report 2023-120. Anybody care to make such a motion?
So moved.
Support.
That was a brilliant motion, Joe.
I just liked what you said, so, motion to table.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And then I guess we don't need a motion, we'll just, staff understands what it is. We're hoping it's coming back.
We'll bring back information.
At our next, at our next get together. And in a minute, I guess we're going to figure out when's our next get together. All right, moving along. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So we'll open up the floor if there's anybody from the public that has any comments, things they want to ask us or tell us. Again, please, you're welcome to come forward. And I'm not seeing anybody rushing to the microphone, so I guess we'll close this public comment as well. Next up on the agenda is other business. Is there any other business there this evening? For the next agenda, it looks like we're going to be talking more about the master plan and maybe a review of Long Lake Township's master plan. One question that the commission needs to focus on now is, do you want to have a study session in two weeks? I'm going to be absent and Joe's going to be absent. Don't know whether we got a quorum, don't know whether you want to go forward with that. John had mentioned before the meeting, conceivably at our first meeting in November, as of now at least, the agenda looks like it might be fairly light. And conceivably, the master plan discussion that is otherwise planned for two weeks could happen in addition to the regular business at our first meeting in November. But I'd like to know what people think about. But I'd like to know what people think about the scheduling.
How's the quorum for the first meeting in November? I will not be here.
I'll be here.
November's not a problem, I'm just going, John and I are going on the 25th of October, so. First question is, are, are all you going to be here? Because, I mean, you would represent a quorum, and then they could decide if you feel it's worthy of having a meeting.
My thought is to have, not have the meeting, to have it in November.
Chris and Bob, as far as you know, you guys here?
I'll be here.
In November?
You're going to be in Lansing again on the 25th?
Yeah.
No, not the 25th.
November 8th is the first meeting in November.
Second Wednesday of November is our next regular meeting.
So, just so you have information, kind of looking out, we do have two new applications. One's a conceptual review for November 8th, and one will be an introduction to a rezoning. So those aren't usually, you know, it's not like you're diving into a heavy duty site plan type thing, or PUD, or application, or anything like that. So I think those are the only items we have that will be new on November 8th, so a fairly light agenda, so we could move. The master plan stuff, what we're, what's going to be different is going to be talking more about implementation strategies than the zoning plan. And then Long Lake Township one is fine, I mean, that's, that's not time sensitive, and that's just, you know, pretty simple.
So we're looking at not having a meeting on the 25th at all?
Well, that, that's the question. Molly can make the meeting on the 25th, she can't make the meeting in August, in November.
I can be at the November meeting, but it's a dice roll whether I get out of Lansing with three hours to get here by 7 o'clock.
Still have a quorum, you know. Even if two of us are gone, we still have a quorum.
No, we're talking October. We've got three that may be gone, and we don't know about Pat Klein. For, for October.
That's what, you, you were a dice roll on getting here in October.
Correct, the 25th, yep. As, as, as two weeks ago, I didn't get out of Lansing until like 5:30, 5:45, which I rolled in here about 8, 8:30, so.
What are your thoughts, Molly? Do you want to proceed with hoping that there's a quorum and do some planning on the master plan in October? Or defer it all to-
I don't think so. I'd rather have the input from the rest of people. We don't want to be too limited on that. We've got time, right? We're not under any crunch.
Nope.
Correct.
You guys on board with canceling October 25th, and instead adding the October 25th agenda items to November 8th?
So we'll have a, maybe a longer meeting on the, on, in November.
There are only one in November.
We only have, we don't have a cycle. November and one in December anyways.
Yeah, there's, yeah, you have, after this, you'll have only two meetings left, the November meeting and the December meeting.
So we're packing the November meeting with a little bit more stuff. That's fine.
John can get pizza if we need it.
We probably need a motion to cancel the meeting.
Correct.
For October 25th, and, and-
I'll make the motion to cancel the meeting for October 25th.
Support.
Any further discussion on that?
There's plenty of time to do that, right? We don't, we know-
Yeah, it's just a notification.
Yeah, is it?
Yep.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so whatever you would, otherwise we're teeing up for November 8th, we'll look at, as well as whatever you were thinking from October 25th that you want us to look at, we'll look at that on November 8th.
The two new applications, I think the rezoning is, introduction, I think, would be pretty straightforward. Conceptual review might involve some discussion. And then the master plan, we are, have just continuing discussions that we've had. What we're also trying to do is actually compile the whole thing based on the study sessions we've already had. So it's more of like introducing it as a complete draft, and then we'll keep refining it as we go. But I think it's definitely doable for that meeting.
Anything else that you want to add or talk to us about? It's a meeting in November.
Nope, that's it.
Anybody else got anything? Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned.